Good evening. I would like to ask Reverend Harris to come lead us in our invocation, and then if you all will join me in the pledge. If everyone would please stand.
In the come Lord that it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. As we meet today, come be with us. Come dwell with us. Guide us. Guide our thoughts, our ideas. Guide our discussions. Thank you for creating all of us in your image, giving us all intrinsic worth and value. Thank you once again for another day. And we pray this all in your son's name. Amen.
And I will now ask Addie Pila to come and lead us in the pledge. If you want to come right up to the microphone right there? And if you can pull it down just a little bit? Yeah, perfect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Wait, Addie, I have some questions for you. Can you come back up to the microphone? How's it going?
Good.
Did you have a good day at school today?
Yeah.
Yes. Were you excited to be back?
Uh, yeah.
Yes. What grade are you in?
Third.
Third? And where do you go to school?
Virtual.
Nice. So what is your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Math. What do you like most about math?
Um, adding and subtracting.
Very good. So I hear that you show livestock. Can you tell us a little bit about that? What do you do when you go show livestock?
Uh, we compete against other animals and the, the judge picks who, who he thinks is the best.
Very nice. And what type of animal do you show?
I show a mane and a simantol.
Man, that is awesome. That is super exciting. And what sport do you play?
Softball.
Softball. What position?
Um, first.
First. Very nice. Man, you must be a good catch. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Did you bring anybody with you?
My mom.
Your mom? Thank you, Mom, for bringing her to come and do the pledge for us tonight. Awesome. Well, I hope that you have a wonderful rest of your school year.
Thank you.
And we will see you next time. All right. This meeting is now called to order for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Our first order of business is to accept the school board agenda for this evening. Superintendent Hyde, do we have any revisions?
Sorry, Madam Chair. Item F number one, new administrators, updated description and an attachment was provided. Item J number three, demolition of security trailer at 205 15th Street Northeast Winter Haven has been removed. Item J four, Project C 00325, Elbert Elementary Campus Modernization. Construction manager selection and contract and pre-construction service fee of $78,399. Item was also removed.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. And I will now hear a motion to accept the September 5th, 2023 school board agenda with revisions as presented.
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. The next order of business is public comments for items on the agenda to be voted upon as adopted at the start of this meeting. As a reminder, we will have two oppor- sorry, three opportunities for public comment this evening. The first will be for items on this evening's agenda to be voted upon. The second will be during pub- during the public hearing for our public hearing topics. And then at the end of the meeting, we will have an additional opportunity for public comments on items that are not on this evening's agenda to be voted upon. To register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left and will, you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. All comments should be directed to myself as the board chair. As a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts and comments, and this is not a question and answer session. However, if you are seeking additional information, I encourage you to contact any of us or the superintendent's office outside of board meetings, and we'd be happy to have deeper conversations. So the first I have for on-agenda items is Donna Windsor. And on deck is Pam Luce.
Hello, good evening. Um, thank you for being here this evening. Also, thank you to the officers here to keep us safe. I wanted to just speak on the, and I'll be brief, I don't have much, but, um, the first agenda item, the Education of Homeless Children and Youth, um, project. I, I really just wanted to express my support of anything and everything that you can do to, to reach out to at-risk youth, particularly the homeless, um, among us, all the way through even their, um, you know, their 18th year where some of them are still seniors in high school. It is important. They're a part of our community, whether, you know, you're comfortable with it or not. They're a part of our community. There's a lot more homeless youth, um, than most statistics report. And I just think it's imperative that we do everything we can to reach out to them, to help them break that cycle for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next is Pam Luce.
Well, good evening. Uh, I've given you a handout in reference to the five-year capital and, and work plan, which is item J three on the consent agenda. One is a copy of last year's actual work plan. The other is the documents placed on the agenda as if they were part of the 2023-24 work plan. Please read the notes on each when you have time. This item should not be on the consent agenda, nor should it be on the agenda at all at this time. The state requirements for educational facilities state that the five-year work plan should be submitted to DOE by October 1st of every year. However, the legislature has been late every year for the last several years in completing the state budget for DOE. And has not, and DOE has not been able to load the budget into the EFS software system. That leaves school districts unable to enter their data into the system and balance the plan. You've heard that from Mr. McLemore. I contacted DOE and the plan will not be open for about two weeks. DOE is aware that it is not the fault of the districts and has not held any district accountable for not having the plan submitted by October 1st. But for some reason, Polk County staff over the last few years has tried to do kind of a bait and switch and has, um, has, uh, given you an internal capital plan. Well, um, the, the 2023 document in your hand is what the plan should look like. The five-year work plan is on the agenda today, is not the plan which will be submitted to DOE. How could it be? The plan's not open in the software yet. We don't have budget numbers to work with, and we don't have revenues especially to work with. And you'll see that that's not on your agenda item. There's no revenue. The reason that this cannot be on the consent agenda, and there's some, there's some dispute on that, and, and we'll get it straightened out. But according to DOE, Florida statutes state that provision shall be made for public comment concerning the district educational facilities plan. If it's on the consent agenda, there's not an opportunity for the public to comment. It also states that five-year district facilities work program shall be counted as zero capacity at the time the work program is adopted and approved by the school board. That means you have to have the completed work plan that is balanced with the revenue and expenditures. And this can't be done prior to the opening of the work plan, the plan in EFS. And according to 1,000 point, 1,001.42 Florida statutes, it is the responsibility of the school board to take steps to assure that students have adequate educational.
Thank you.
Facilities.
Next on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes. First, we'll look at the August 22nd, 2023 school board meeting. And I'll now seek a motion to approve the minutes from the August 22nd, 2023 school board meeting.
Second.
Ms. Miller and Mr. Sharpless? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And next, we'll look at the August 22nd, 2023 work session. So I'll now seek a motion to approve the minutes from the August 22nd, 2023 work session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Miller and Dr. Sharpless? Mr. Sharpless, sorry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be approval of the consent agenda. So I'll now seek a motion to approve the September 5th, 2023 consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Dr. Allen and Mr. Sharpless? Any discussion? Ms. Fields?
Superintendent Hyde, can you respond to the, uh, comments that were made concerning the capital plan?
Actually, Mr. Fix addressed some of that during the workshop today. If Mr. Fix is available, I'd prefer to have him or Mr. McLemore come forward and address that. We can find them and bring him back in here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Did you want us to wait for him to address those comments?
Yes, ma'am, if you would. He should be close. If you recall too, um, you were provided with the revenue page. Mr. Fix also showed that today during the workshop. You'd received that, that Excel spreadsheet previously.
I just think it needs to be.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Well, I was gonna say, as we're waiting, I'd want to draw attention to N2, which is the Universal Access Services Agreement with COLTS, and that would be Citrus Connection. So if you have a high school student in grades nine through 12, you have the benefit of using unlimited access to our public transit system. Uh, Mr. Thomas Phillips leads that organization and does a great job, as well as Neil Ward, a great individual within that organization. So it's really a continuation, and I'm excited to bring that forward. There was discussion also to maybe pilot that, um, within middle school, sixth through eighth. And look forward to that conversation in days ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. There he is.
There he is.
Welcome back.
I was actually in my office.
I was gonna say, did you run here? Made pretty good time.
The dads wouldn't let me in the back door.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, board members, for allowing me to come in and address some of the issues Ms. Luce raised. As I said in the workshop, that is correct. Those, the, um, the state has not fully, um, put all the information in. We're trying to get this plan to you ahead of time so that you can see what we're working on and doing. Now bear in mind that because we're gonna be bringing it back to you for you to look at and to amend by then, hopefully, the state will have all that information and you'll be able to have that second, excuse me, I'm trying to catch my breath. Look at it with all that information that is, um, fully put in there. One of the reasons, though, that we try and get this plan done in mid-September is so that our local government partners, as part of the concurrency process, also have a capital plan that they can look to, to make sure that we are doing our best to try and keep up with development in concurrency as well. So this is, um, this is a situation that we find ourselves in from time to time when the state drags its feet, yet through our inter-local agreements, and not just us, but other districts as well that have inter-local agreements with their, um, local government partners through concurrency, also are trying to, remember, coordinate their capital plans, as well as the other local government capital plans. And remember, their, um, their fiscal year is September 1. So we're trying to get those plans all coordinated together so that they're in tandem together, so that when we go to develop a school site three or four years down the road, we have coordinated through our capital plan and their capital plan, and we know where the infrastructure needs to go in place when we open a 21C or a South Point Elementary, and so on. Now, it is, it is, as Ms. Luce said, it's no fault of ours. It's something the state does from time to time. It is in no way us trying to keep any of the truth from you. In fact, that's why in the workshop I said, not all that information's in there. But it won't affect our bottom line because the fact is, is most of your capital revenue is being raised locally via your impact fee and your sales tax. And then, of course, we have the one and a half mil local effort as well. And in fact, at the end of the 20, excuse me, at the end of the five-year process, the reason I was able to assure you that we could bring in those, um, planning dollars for Crystal Lake Elementary is we're ending it with a $20 million balance, uh, as well. So we have, the money is there in the capital plan. So it, and once again, even if it were an issue, when we bring the plan back in that late meeting in October, by then, it'll all be populated and you'll have, because remember, Mr. Sharpless, you had asked, will we be able to see the document? By then, we would be able to see the document again. Any other questions? And sorry, I just went to my office and watched it.
You're all right. I apologize that we locked you out of the building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Fix.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the response. Thanks, Superintendent Hyde.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Ms. Fields?
No, ma'am.
And Dr. Allen, yours were your previous comments. Any further discussion? And we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the September 5th, 2023 consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Superintendent Hyde, do you have any new administrators that you would like to introduce?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, community members and staff, it's my pleasure to introduce four new administrators this evening, or promotions that have occurred. Ms. Laura McCabe, previously coordinator of Labor and Employee Relations, is being promoted to Director of Labor and Employee Relations.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Hyde. I'm humbled by this opportunity and honored by the confidence that Superintendent Hyde, Mr. Pitts, Mr. Boren, and Dr. Williams have in my leadership ability. I'm grateful for their mentorship and that of previous administrators in my over 20 years in human resources. My supportive husband, Bill, is here to celebrate this milestone, along with our daughter Ashley, a former science teacher, and our son-in-law Taylor and two granddaughters ages 22 months and three months old. I look forward to many more years of service with Polk County Public Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations. Does your husband want to come down for a photo as well? Any other family?
I was gonna say, you gotta get that pretty bow in there.
There you go.
Oh, we're getting the little one too. Hold on just a second. We got, we got a couple more coming.
Wait.
Yeah, one more. Some impressive speed on that stroller. I'm not gonna lie. Awesome.
Congratulations, Laura. Next is Cameron Chella, school-based, did I pronounce it correctly? Okay, I heard a, I heard something there for a moment. I was like. School-based math coach at Churchwell Elementary School is being promoted to the Acting Assistant Principal at Carlton-Palmore Elementary.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. It is a pleasure to become an assistant principal for Polk County Public Schools, particularly at Carlton-Palmore Elementary. I would like to thank Mr. Hyde and the board for this opportunity to lead. I would also like to thank Dr. Henry for trusting me to lead one of his previous schools, now Ms., um, Kendrick. I would also like to thank Mr. Brady Draper for guiding me in this role and taking me along for the ride to be his assistant principal. I intend to carry on the patriot way, focusing on academic success and the leader in me program which builds school culture at CPE. I'd also like to thank my family, who's watching live in Connecticut. Hi, guys! And my boyfriend and friends who are all here to support me and believing me in my goals. Again, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity, and as our students and staff say, a learner today, a leader tomorrow. Thank you.
Boyfriend and friends, you're welcome to come down and join the photo. Next is Kathy Copeland, Acting Assistant Principal at Frostproof Ben Hill Griffin Elementary is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Frostproof Ben Hill Griffin Elementary.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Hyde and esteemed board members. This is such a surreal moment for me. From being a little girl who always knew she wanted to be a teacher, to being blessed to have a wonderful, supportive husband of 36 years and four beautiful children, to include my first precious granddaughter this past July, to being unexpectedly called to leadership in my mid-50s when many in the education field are walking into retirement. I must thank God first of all for being my Savior and Lord, a constant friend who guides my steps and orders my path and keeps my life and adventure with Him. I cannot describe all the beautiful people I've been blessed to work alongside and to work under, who have loved me, helped me, corrected me, sacrificed for me, and encouraged me along this path. Each student I have grown to love over these past 21 years in Polk County and their families who have become part of my family now. For this, I am forever grateful. Thank you all so much for this incredible opportunity you've blessed me with to serve the staff, students, and families at Frostproof Ben Hill Griffin Elementary School. I fell in love with this area the moment I drove through those orange groves and hills, around the lakes, et cetera. It reminds me very much of the area I grew up in, in Richmond, Missouri, as a small-town girl. So it feels like a perfect fit. Mrs. Chapman, Mr. Authison, and the entire staff have already welcomed me so graciously, and it is truly a joy to trust God to help me to serve with His grace as together we commit to help this school be the bedrock of this beautiful community. Again, thank you so very much.
Congratulations. And if you have family and friends, they should come down, please. Great job. Congratulations. And finally, Megan Long, reading coach from Wendell Watson Elementary School is being promoted to Acting Assistant Principal at Kathleen Elementary.
See, she can come up if she wants.
You, you may want to go ahead and head on down.
Yeah. You can come on down.
Come on down. Come on, sweetheart. It's a team effort.
Thank you very much to the board, Superintendent Hyde, Dr. Henry, and Ms. Kendrick for this opportunity. Thank you to my principal, Tracy Upton, um, for all your support and guidance. Thank you to my family and friends for all the support over the last few years. My husband, Chris, is here, my son, Cooper, and my daughter, Molly. Um, and I have a lot of family that are watching online, so hello, family. My dad, sister, stepdad, and in-laws couldn't be here, but they're watching online, and I'm very excited to be a Kathleen Cougar and serve the community where I live.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Family, please, there you go. Madam Chair, that concludes new administrators for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Our next order of business will be our action agenda. So first will be item P1, which is the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Annual Financial Report. And I'll now seek a motion to approve the FY 2022-2023 ESC 348 Report of the Financial Data to the Commissioner of Education and the ESC 145 Superintendent's Annual Financial Report to be transmitted by the deadline set by FL DOE, September 11th, 2023. Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Sharpless? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. And item P2 will be our Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And I will seek a motion to approve Bishop Willie Mincy to the Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Mr. Sharpless? Any discussion? Ms. Fields?
I don't really think that, um, we need any introduction to Bishop Mincy. He has been a faithful supporter of the public school system here for years, 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 years. So I'm not gonna read all of this, but I will read a few things. Uh, he is, uh, currently, um, a pastor in the Winter Haven Community. He is pastor of True Holiness Tabernacle, and he's been there for 41 years. That's amazing to me. He is very active in the Winter Haven Community, as well as in Polk County. He is part of several organizations, including the NAACP Winter Haven Branch, where he is the current branch president and serves on the executive committee. The second vice president of the Interact Alliance, Winter Haven. Interfaith Ministerial Alliance, Winter Haven. Ministerial Association in Polk County, Interfaith Ministerial Alliance. He has acted with Polk County School Board, we know that, and serves on the Executive Committee of the Churches of God and the True Holiness International. Pastor Mincy. Pastor Mincy, I call him Bishop Mincy, is well-known as a pastor-at-large in our Polk County communities. And we are just very thankful, Bishop Mincy, for your continuous support of our school district, and we are very thankful that you're willing to serve on the sales tax oversight committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Bishop Mincy, did you want to say anything, or do you want to wait till... All right, sounds good. Next is going to be action agenda item P3, district reorganization. And I will seek a motion to accept the district reorganization as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sharpless and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Ms. Fields?
I don't really want to repeat what was said earlier in the work session, but I think we had some good discussions, some questions that needed to be clarified. And so I look forward to Superintendent Hyde, as it relates to maybe looking at the process of how we are bringing all of the different departments before it's time for us to consider voting on them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we will open our public hearing. And this evening, we have our budget. So this is the 2023-2024 final budget and millage rate. There are no speakers signed up for public comment. So first, I will seek a motion to adopt the required local effort millage of 3.160 mils.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Allen and Ms. Cunningham, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, I'll seek a motion to adopt the discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mils.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll seek a motion to adopt the local capital improvement, capital outlay millage of 1.5 mils.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We do not need a motion for this, but just to note, the total millage will be 5.408. Next, we will need a motion to approve Resolution 2023-2024-03, determining revenues and millage levied.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Allen and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And last, I'll seek a motion to approve Resolution 2023-2024-04, adopting the 2023-2024 final budget and millage rates.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Cunningham, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We will now close the public meeting and reopen the school board meeting. And next up will be Superintendent Hyde's report. Superintendent Hyde?
Madam Chair, the next work session will be held on September 26, 2023. The work session will begin at 9:00 a.m. Meeting will be held at the district office located at 1915 South Floral Avenue in Barto. Additionally, as part of the superintendent's report, I'd like to again thank all of our amazing employees, who help support all of our shelters and make sure that our schools are prepared pre-storm, post-storm, and even during storm. We have an amazing group of individuals in our trades groups and other maintenance areas, who help make sure that this is able to be done. We had over three hundred district-level administrator and district-level staff who had signed up to cover on rotations and teams of seven to twelve individuals in seven-hour increment shifts. All of our shelters, we were fortunate this time that we did not feel the brunt of this storm, and unfortunately, there are multiple other storms that are out there. As you know, we had the capacity to house a hundred, or, excuse me, not a hundred and thirteen, thirteen thousand potential shelter residents. We did take in over a hun, we took in a hundred and thirteen, largely due to the fact that the storm and its impact here in Polk County diminished significantly as it continued to approach and went elsewhere. Our hearts and thoughts continue to be with those who were directly impacted by the storm, just as we did last year. I was remiss earlier in the workshop for not sharing this. We did reach out to our surrounding counties and those who were impacted and offered assistance, as we've done in the past. As you know, last year, we flexed a lot of our maintenance staff, sent utility trucks with equipment and materials to help them recover from the storm, and we made the same offer this time. Next year, we'll be in a much better place to continue to offer support. As you recall, the governor's office approved an appropriation for us to procure mobile generators that not only will allow us to make sure that we maintain power in our shelters, but that upon their closure, if Polk County is not directly impacted, we will be able to mobilize those and take them to other counties that were directly affected. And that was one of the reasons why we were approved for that appropriation this last year. Additionally, I'd like to say thank you, obviously, for the law enforcement officers. You know, these are all individuals who not only give of themselves, but are there forfeiting their time and the safety of their own families to make sure that our community is protected. Without law enforcement, shelters would be a little bit more chaotic, and obviously, we want them there to do the background checks on any individuals, so we can make sure that we can shelter appropriately. We did have one pet shelter, and that was Tennerock High School. I don't think people realize, after two days of pets living in a building, it can get interesting. And so it's a lot of cleanup, a lot of maintenance, and we're very happy to be able to support those residents. And we get all manner of animals coming into our shelters. Some we have to turn away, others that we, you know, embrace. We have pocket pets, that's a new term for me, things, you know, hamsters, gerbils, things like that, all the way up to large canines. And we had, we learned some valuable lessons last year. For example, if you have a newly adopted pet, and they're too young, they're not able to get vaccinated, and that's one of the requirements for our shelters. So we had to actually create a quarantine area for certain animals, so that they could be sheltered appropriately as well. So we do a very good job of that. Additionally, I do want to point out, and again, as I mentioned today, I want to appeal to our, to our parents and our students. We have had a series of tragic events in Polk County at large. We have lost nearly ten individuals, if not more, to date, starting from the first day of school, due to traffic fatalities, and largely due to speed, and excessive speed. And speed mixed with inclement weather is not a good mix, especially for young drivers and inexperienced drivers. And so it's something that I want to continue to reiterate. We've promised to maintain a focus on pedestrian safety, but we also have to make sure that we're reminding our students to please be careful, please adjust their habits, leave earlier, drive a little slower, or just get there later. Quite frankly, we'd rather you get there, and I know that there's been a catchphrase that law enforcement's used, but arrive alive, right? And that's our goal for our students. And unfortunately, we've seen far too many tragedies of late involving vehicles and traffic accidents. And again, much, many of those could be avoided if we just simply slowed down and paid attention to road conditions. And so our hearts and obviously prayers are, continue to be, to extend to those families and those directly impacted by this. But I wanted to take the opportunity to remind everyone, please have a conversation with your child, and remind them about the need to slow down and heed all of the traffic laws that are out there. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been asked to request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held on, on October 24, 2023, during the regularly scheduled school board meeting for policy updates to Policy Number 1111, designation of new positions, 3121.01, background screening and employment checks, and 5330, use of medications.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I'll now seek a motion to approve to advertise the public hearing for these policy updates.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And the motion carries.
The advertisement.
Thank you. All right. And I apologize, Ms. Matthews. I did not ask during work session, but do you have a report this evening? Okay. Thank you. All right. And Dr. Allen, you're up first.
Very good. So as we launch into this school year, I just wanted to really give a nice shout-out to our guidance counselors. At the beginning of the school year, I mean, they are just bombarded and blasted with student emails, making schedule adjustments. I know just within our household, one bit of communication I heard was, you know, I sent thirty emails in the last two days to my guidance counselor, making changes to a schedule, and adding an AP course, or a dual enrollment, just all kinds of adjustments. So if I just think about that one, and just multiply that around the school district. So again, thanks to our guidance counselors and all the work that they do, and making all those adjustments at the very beginning. And then, on the flip of that, I just wanted to say thanks to our principals and teachers, who continue to have a lifelong impact in our students' lives. And my angle on that one was, as I launch into my school semester at Florida Southern, I'm advising a lot of students that have graduated from our Polk County School District. And, you know, they don't necessarily see me in this capacity, but I like to probe and hear from them. And just to hear those tinges of stories of how, you know, that middle-school teacher or that principal really influenced them in choosing the discipline that they're studying at college is quite affirming. And just wanted to share that, and really say a big thanks to our teachers and our principals, that have such a huge impact within our students' lives. Madam Chair, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo a little bit about what I said at workshop today. Just want to give a huge shout-out and thank you to all the folks in our administrative team throughout the district, who worked so diligently over Hurricane Idalia, tropical storm, whatever she ended up being. But I know there are countless numbers of folks, a lot of them were in the room today during work session, that left their families, volunteered, or were asked to serve, and did graciously, gave up time with their families on a Labor Day, or on a, sorry, weekend, to do what needed to be done, to try to take care of our schools, and service our community. Because we do have a lot of folks that when the call goes out to evacuate, they evacuate because they have to. And as I said, I personally was blessed. We had a lot of wind and rain, but no particular damage. But not everybody may have been so lucky, and for Polk County schools, to always be the ones that open up our facilities to be able to help those in need, regardless of what type of need, and from what demographic they may come, including pets. And Superintendent shared this morning, last year, we even had a horse in one of our shelters. I mean, we're here for everybody, and we strive to do the right thing. And I'm just so grateful that we have employees that care, and come out and do that, and volunteer their time and service to be in those shelters, whether they're checking a person in, whether they're assisting with a pet, or whatever the thing may be. They're there. We're always the ones that are called upon. There is no other organization that is asked to open up a shelter besides Polk County Public Schools. And so I'm just very proud of that. And I just want to give a shout-out and a huge thank you to all of you who may be listening, who participated in that during the storm. Yeah, your time and talent was greatly appreciated. So thank you so very much, and also to our law enforcement for being there with us, side by side. Kudos to everyone, and thank you for keeping us all safe. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Nolte?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree totally with Dr. Allen and Mrs. Cunningham, what they said previously. Just great job. Thank you all for attending tonight and showing interest in our fabulous school system here, trying to make it better. Teachers, administrators, great job. Superintendent Hyde, excellent job on organizations and organizational, and getting the shelters all ready to rock and roll. And thank you for teachers and administrators, and all the time they gave. And it was just tremendous. Safety first. Like you mentioned, we have had some serious injuries, and if everybody can just try to slow down, we're in that school zone, and talk to your neighbors about it. Stop those school buses when you see those flashing little signs out there, and, you know, just think safety first. Sheriff Judd and the police officers of Polk County did a super job, and they continue to do a great job. And I wish everybody a great school year, and be safe. Don't forget, now, these youngins grow up awfully fast, so spend some time, especially the elementary ones, reading to them five, 10, 15 minutes every night. And don't forget, you can go out in the front yard and play some catch. And they grew up so fast, and before you know it, they're, what's that song, Cats in a Cradle? Something like that. Anyway, thank you again for coming, and have a great evening. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Ms. Fields?
I have a statement I'd like to read tonight. Tonight, my board report on my statement is about school board meeting decorum at our last school board meeting. There were lots of people present at our last school board meeting to voice their opinion on whether or not proclamation should be continued. As viewpoints were shared, folks shared their opinion in support of discontinuing proclamations and in support of continuing proclamations. Comments quickly got out of order, and comments from many of those in support of proclamations continuing and not continuing were very disrespectful. Booing came from both groups. Name-calling came from both groups. Insults came from both groups. Some even used profanity. What would Jesus do? Well, He would be ashamed of how some of us are acting, setting a poor example for our babies, our children, many in the audience. Thank God, they're not here right now. If you all don't stop your mean and hateful ways, we're going to have the same scenario here, as was recently witnessed in Jacksonville. Wake up, people, before it is too late. You all can agree to disagree in a respectful manner. State your viewpoint, and leave it in the hands of the, of the decision-makers. The majority of the time when there are controversial issues, I vote differently than the majority of the school board members. I might not like the results of the votes, but I don't boo them, I don't insult them, I don't call them out of their name, I don't curse at them, I accept the decision and move on. I abide by the golden rule. You do unto others as you would have them do unto you. So, hear this. I will not continue to sit in board meetings and listen to all kinds of mean and hateful statements. I don't think we should even allow this type of behavior in our meetings. Mrs. Wyatt, I have removed those who are out of order. I will remove myself until this part of the meeting is over. And that is the end of my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Sharpless?
So I want to talk about a few of the things that, that I've done recently, and then some in the future here. First, I want to say that last month, I got to tour Scenic K8, which is in Haynes City, a new school. It was completed ahead of schedule, and it was very impressive. So I think kudos to the district for thinking outside the box on this model, as well as the construction company for getting it done. Also, I started my football tour, my Friday Night Lights tour. I was honored to be at the George Jenkins High School football game with my mother and my son, whenever the, the field was dedicated to the late Jerry May. It was a very touching moment. Also, I was at Auburn Dales game last week. That was fun. Only got to stay about the first half, because the rain started coming down. But I will say, Principal Bennett and your wife both were great hosts, and I appreciate that. Next week, I start my campaign to increase elementary agricultural literacy across the district. I'll be reading to select elementary schools that I'm invited to. I'm really excited about that, about our agricultural industry. You know, it's that way students realize that milk doesn't come from Publix, it actually comes from a dairy. And so I'm excited about that, and actually getting out there face-to-face with some of our elementary school students. I've taught middle and high, middle and high schools, as well as college, but, you know, never really, other than my, my students, I've never been, sorry, my children, as well as my experience, don't, don't spend a lot of time at elementary schools. So I'm really looking forward to that, truly. Speaking of my children, tonight is, today is my oldest son Wyatt's sixth birthday. So Wyatt, if you're watching, happy birthday. I love I love you, I can't wait to come home and see you. I want to just report on a really tragic event that happened in my district yesterday. Stephen Lee Rada, a young man, was murdered by his father. And I want the communities in Frostproof and Lake Wales to know that I grieve with them, I care about them, I live right in between the two communities where the young man went to school. I'm very thankful to our school district for having grieve counselors at the schools to help them. It's just a really tragic event, and it's not something, as a parent, that you would like to, I mean, even fathom. It's just really tough. And the last thing I want to talk about, speaking of something that's hard to fathom, is next month, I mentioned this in the work session, but next month, I'm going to be going down to Marjory Stoneman High School, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, and I'm going to be going on a tour of the 1200 building, there where horrific event happened, obviously. And I take school safety very important, very, all my family are teachers, or they're in the school system, and they're on campuses daily. My children are on campuses daily. And every time I hear about something like what happened in Uvalde, Texas, or down in Parkland, the thought goes through my mind that that could be my kids, that could be my family. And so, it's certainly not something that I am excited to go see, but I definitely think it's important. And so, I will be going next month to Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. I hope that Wyatt is watching the school board meeting, because he might be the coolest six-year-old I've ever met, if this is what he watches for his nightly news. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a quick report. I also was able to tour the scenic Terrace School, which is a great new school that's housing our Albert kids until we have that new school rebuilt. I will say that the Efficiency Committee, I think is what we're calling them, was having a meeting there, and I stuck my nose in, which I may have, wasn't invited, but Superintendent let me join. And it was interesting to see, when the Superintendent shared facts about the numbers in our district of students, several were surprised at the number of students with disabilities, or the number of students who are non-English speakers, or the ones that may fall into different categories that we have. So, I think, you know, the education of the public is very important, and a lot of that is educating people who don't attend the meetings, on what the facts are about this district. So, I appreciate having that Efficiency Committee, and having them come in and learn about our district, and see what we're doing, the progress being made, because I think that speaks best, and it speaks at volumes for what's happening here in Polk County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I do not have a report this evening, but I just want to comment on how cool it is that all of our law enforcement tonight, we have an all-female team, which I think is really fun this evening. I don't know that that's happened before recently, so, thank you for being here to keep us safe. And with that, we will go to public comments. So, we'll now begin our public comments for items not included in this evening's agenda. Just as before, to register to speak, community members must have filled out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no immediate action will be taken on items presented during this public comment portion of the meeting. If follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on an agenda at a subsequent meeting, in accordance with school board policy. And just as a reminder from before, all comments shall be directed through me as the school board chair. First up, we have Jamie Smith, and then on deck will be Douglas Johnson. And if you are on deck, if you can just make your way to the little red line over here, that will be very helpful.
Thank you for letting us come and talk this evening. Hopefully, my comments aren't so wild. So, I just want to let you know that I'm a native of Lakeland, born and raised, so my whole life has been in the public school system here. I went to Florida Southern College, and so, everything about me is Lakeland. My child goes to a public school in South Lakeland, and I came today because, last week, I went to a Lakeland Chamber event, that was through the EDC, and Mr. Hyde spoke there. And, you know, he brought up some issues about what's going on in the public school system. And two of the things that caught my eye were the funding per child, and he said, you know, in Florida, it's nine thousand, the nation average is twelve. Doug, through the DOE, that's not exactly right, but it's a few dollars off. For example, St. John's County does more with less, it's one of the top-rated school districts, so we can do more with less. And then the other thing that caught my eye was the truancy issue. And so, I was like, that was a large number, so I went onto the CDC's website to look to see what was that number. So, just, CDC have made a report back in 2014, or 2015, and they said, of course, the number-one cause of truancy was illness, of course. The numbers went up really high recently. We all get it, they tell us to keep us, better to stay home. So, I imagine that in the next year or two, that truancy will, for that factor, will go away. Second cause is bullying. So, the numbers from the CDC's website, and they have the report right here, it just, it goes over some information about bullying, and how that kids don't feel safe in school. And they won't come. My child has been, he's in elementary school, and he's been bullied, and I won't bring him to school for the next few days after he's been bullied. And I don't think it's being addressed in schools appropriately. So, when he was in BPK, I witnessed a bullying incident when I dropped him off, and I took him out of school, he never came back. And it was at the same school. So, there's your two months of truancy, right there. And that was just a few years ago. So, I just, that's my thing, I just don't think it's being addressed appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Superintendent Hyde?
Just to clarify, that was not me that made the comment about school finance, that was a representative for IDEA schools, who were sharing why IDEA was previously unable to come to the state of Florida, because of the low level of funding, as compared to other states. But they're getting some other private subsidies, so that was, just for clarification, that was not me that stated about school funding.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. All right, we have Douglas Johnston, and then on deck is Rainn Johnson.
Good evening. I already sent a couple of emails with everything I'm going to read from tonight, plus plenty of educational material. So, first of all, September is National Suicide Awareness, or Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. So, I'm going to read just the start of the new research on LGBTQ teen suicide rates, as reported by Newport Academy. Research shows that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer teens are at increased risk of suicide and mental health issues like depression and anxiety. One of the most startling statistics, LGBTQ teens consider suicide and make suicide attempts at about four times the national rate for all adolescents. These numbers shed light on the crucial importance of suicide prevention for LGBTQ youth during Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and all year round. Parents, teachers, mentors, and policymakers must help ensure that LGBTQ teens receive ongoing support and access to mental health care resources. Key takeaways: The Trevor Project estimates that more than 1.8 million LGBT youth 13 to 24 seriously consider suicide each year in the United States, and that at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. These challenges include stigma, family rejection, bullying, threats of injury, violence, increasingly limited access to gender-affirming care. Higher rates of depression among the LGBTQ population also lead to higher rates of substance abuse, as a form of self-medication for mental health stressors. Research has constantly shown that support and acceptance from parents leads to better mental health, greater self-acceptance, and enhanced well-being among transgender youth. Some key perspective factors for LGBT youth suicide, this is jumping over to the Trevor Project, social support and acceptance from adults and peers. Having at least one accepting adult can reduce the risk of a suicide attempt among LGBTQ youth people by 40%. A 2021 peer-reviewed study by the Trevor Project's researchers published in Transgender Health found that transgender and non-binary youth who reported gender identity acceptance from adults and peers had significantly lower odds of attempting suicide in the past year. LGBTQ youth who felt high social support from their family reported attempting suicide at least half the rate of those who felt low or moderate social support. Listen, I could just keep going on and on and on. These are just types of people that exist. You are elected officials, speak up. Come on, we need you to defend our kids, okay? I don't think I'm being contradictory here, or crazy. These are human beings. Our community needs you guys to step up, recognize them. All right, thank you, be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Rainn Johnson, and on deck is Spike P.
Hello, I'm Rainn Johnson, with Women's Voices Southwest Florida's Youth Chapter, and I am a 10th grade student. I have been arrested. I was arrested at 13, and I had, it was on July 4th, actually, so it was about a week and a half before I started. I found out that I was, first off, kicked out of my school, second off, for being queer. I was expelled from my school for being a queer, non-binary student. And I don't even think I have to go into and explain why and how that had such a detrimental effect on my mental health, to lose all of my friends, all those I cared about. And then on top of that, getting arrested a week later for losing my rights, and then members of this board saying that I need to worry more about my academics than activism. I'm worried about my academics, but I'm also worried about whether or not I'm going to be allowed to learn that queer people exist. I'm worried that I'm going to not be allowed to know that slavery was a horrible time in our history, that we need to own up to and acknowledge exists, just like we need to acknowledge every part of history. We need to acknowledge Stonewall. We need to acknowledge the '60s, the '70s, we need to acknowledge World War II, we need to acknowledge World War I, because if not, we're going to repeat ourselves, we're going to go back to a time where it wasn't okay to openly be queer, not like it is now. Not that I can't say my school, because I'm worried I'm going to get shot trying to learn geometry. Like, I shouldn't have to be here, I shouldn't have to be spending my time worrying about whether or not you guys are going to accept and acknowledge that Black history needs to be taught properly, whether or not queer history should be taught properly, whether or not proclamations are going to stay in place to recognize said things. I'm tired of worrying constantly whether or not my education is safe, and whether or not I'm safe.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Spike P., and on deck is Erin Fior.
Unfortunately, it can't be a good afternoon, as I have to be here tonight. It's unfortunate, truly. Unfortunate that we have students that feel unsafe in their classrooms, cafeterias, and even just walking to their next class periods. Unfortunate that I have personally had queer students reach out to me, crying deathly, afraid that they will be harmed on campus because of their identities, afraid that they will be killed on campus for their identities. And now, now we are going to have students feel unrepresented in their communities, alone, not only in who they are, but the unique struggles that they face, and that their ancestors might have faced as well. The removal of all proclamations is nothing but an extremist push to get rid of unique students and staff members. This agenda does nothing but harm every individual, every citizen in this county district. These kind of pushes cause certain hate groups to come out in support of them as well, as seen last meeting, when an Iron Cross Swastika medal was seen in this very room. There needs to be some serious actions with this board to bring back all proclamations, so that all marginalized people can feel heard, represented, and not ignored by board members that are supposed to represent them and care about them. History will remember your decision, and for the sake of Polk County, our students and our staff, please make it a good one.
Thank you. Erin Fior, and on deck is Donna Windsor.
Yeah, my name is Erin, and I have two kids in the Polk School System, and my kids are both voracious readers, and I assume that we greatly annoy the librarians, because we get out hundreds of books a year. And I have had to teach them to be discerning in their choices, because there are many vulgar books being slipped into our school libraries. And I've submitted a few books for removal, and my kids are really happy that I'm doing this, they're really interested in it, and they're encouraging me to review more, and they want books like this one removed from the libraries, and that's why I'm here. This is an excerpt from Red Hood, and it's by Elena Arnold, and it's in several Polk County schools. In this passage, the main character is a young girl, and she's just about to get her first period. I object to all vulgar books in school libraries, and I hope that you'll remove this and others like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fior. Donna Windsor, and on deck is Billy Townsend.
Hello again. So, I did want to take a moment just to speak to what Mr. Sharpless talked about, the student who was, unfortunately, who was killed. He's 16-years-old, he's in Power Academy. When I think about that boy, I picture my own, and I think that, you know, that drives the message of mental health, and how important it is home, because I can't think of a sane person who could or would do something like that. So, you know, that's one reason why I know at the last meeting, mental health was a subject that was addressed, and I think that it is very important. So, anything we can do to support that, I'm in complete favor of. Tonight, the reason for me being here is, I think you made a mistake in voting to do away with proclamations. I think it was a hasty decision made by this board, simply because you felt that because there were opposing views on one particular proclamation, it was more effective just to throw the baby out with the bathwater, and to do away with all proclamations. And I do think that there was a mistake made by doing that. I think that, you know, as I spoke earlier about the agenda item, that to help homeless youths, a large percentage of the homeless youths in Polk County and in our country are LGBTQ students who don't feel safe at home. And so, by trying to avoid having a conversation about them because it makes us uncomfortable, is failing those students. And I do think that responsibility lies with you. I think you have a responsibility to really think about the issues that kids today are facing. They're different than the issues that I faced when I was young, they're different than the issues that some of you faced when you were young, and we need- And we need to take those issues into account. And we need to hear it and think about it from the student's point of view. We need not say, well, serves them right that they got arrested. We need to not say that their children and their voices don't matter. We need to listen. We need to be quiet, we need to hear them, and we need to acknowledge what they're saying, what they're asking us to do. And we need to care. And I don't feel like we did that by just saying, well, too much discussion. Let's just do away with it instead. We had a process. The, the person who was doing the proclamations for years was, made it very clear that their process was very specific. We just let it go when that person stopped working for the school board. And that's not the right way to handle it. That was a mistake on y'all's part. And you failed the kids in the community by doing so. Do better.
Thank you, Ms. Windsor. Billy Townsend and on deck is Kyle Moore.
Hey, everybody, good evening. I wanted to address the fact, and I'll, I'll address this to Ms. Wyatt. There is a, a board, a board, a board member, Mr. Nolte, who in recent, recent days stipulated to a campaign viol- violation that is a felony. I think he's never addressed that in pu- in public. He's, he's never apologized to the public for it. I would urge him to do, to do that. Also, there are a couple of questions I would urge him to answer, which would include, has there been any sort of a great agreement with the state attorney's o- office about prosecution related to, you know, his, his, his decision to stipulate to the Florida Elections Commission? And, you know, if he would be willing to produce the receipts for these seventy-five hundred dollars worth of stuff that he had to correct on, on, on his camp- campaign information. I think all of that would go along, a long way toward clearing the air with the public as a whole. Can't make him do it, but I wanted to state that on the record. Secondly, concerning the proclamations, someone, someone noted, you know, I'm, I'm glad, glad they did that the coming month is, is, is that, is that National Suicide Prevention Month? We've just come out of a National Drug Overdose Prevention Month, Week. I think both of those could have been addressed here tonight and, and would have brought people into the, the meeting room, would have brought people working on those, those issues, which obviously bear very heav- heavily on, on, on our kids. I echo what Ms. Windsor said, the, the vote last week was foolish and, and really cowardly. If, if you don't wanna take votes, then don't take votes, you know, or, or take, take a hard vote. I think to cut yourself off from the, from the community because you're afraid the community has something to say to you does not speak well for the position you, you hold. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Next is Kyle Moore and on deck is Matthew Grochky. I will, one day, I'm so sorry. Graholski, I'm so sorry. Whenever you're ready, Kyle.
I'm Kyle and I am the one with the crazy, but in my opinion, true, and I try to keep them as fact-based as I can, comments. And I am a product of Polk County Public Schools. Congratulations, you got rid of all the proclamations. What now? And before I get too far into this, I do want to say, I can agree to disagree, and I do on many subjects, but I will not when it comes to human rights and the well-being of my queer children. You are following the footsteps of the fascist GOP and their Project Twenty Twenty Five. If you are not aware of what Project Twenty Twenty Five is, it is a master plan created by a coalition of powerful conservative organizations, including but not limited to the Family Research Council, the Heritage Foundation, Alliance Defending Freedom, the American Legislative Change Council, and more. All of which are entities that have been pushing for the horrific anti-trans, anti-LGBTQ, and anti-diversity and inclusion bills that we have seen in the past year. Project Twenty Twenty Five includes a nine-hundred-page document with detailed plans of criminalizing queer existence, removing transgender ideology, whatever that is, from all schools, labeling any and all librarians and/or teachers who do not strictly follow Christo-Fascist conservative ideology as registered sex offenders, and how to eradicate transgender ideology from public life. Once again, whatever that is. I would highly recommend that you research Project Twenty Twenty Five as three minutes is nowhere near enough time to tell you how truly horrific it is. In case I haven't made it very clear, Project Twenty Twenty Five is a genocidal Nazi ideology in which you are following step by step. I find it honestly sad that you allow this type of ideology and bigotry to take place here, especially considering that one of the board members who prescribed it is known for shady financial indiscretions, is known for tweeting about my transgender sibling who was thirteen at the time, saying that they shouldn't care about activism and that they deserve to be arrested. I find the actions of this board, and especially the actions of Rick Nolte, to be unacceptable and appalling, and I ask that you please consider, what side of history do you want to be remembered for?
Thank you. Matthew Gr-
Graholski.
Graholski, I'm so sorry.
No, you're all good. Before I start, I want to make it clear that this is not directed towards the honorable members, Ms. Miller and Ms. Fields. I do agree with you, Ms. Fields. But I was elected as president of the Polk County Young Democrats at the age of nineteen to represent students. And students are angry, they're hurt, and they live in fear. For the rest of board, I want to make it known that we see what you're doing and how horrible it is for our students. And I want to also remind you of what this country was founded on: life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. To Dr. Allen, Ms. Wyatt, and Mr. Sharpless, I know you all care about winning reelection, maybe future political jobs. But we remember what you did. We'll remember that you stood against our students. Maybe you should just, um, maybe you should just violate campaign finance laws like Rick did instead of signaling that you don't support us. Ms. Cunningham, I was so shocked to see you sit-
Please direct all comments through the chair. Thank you.
I was so shocked to see members of the board that have been absent in previous meetings actually show up for their job for once. I honestly wish in some instances that they would not show up because they would not approve the bigotry and the hatred that we saw in that room that day. You all took an oath to represent students and teachers, yet you don't. Do attacks on our community centers do anything to you? Do Nazi-inspired shootings in Jacksonville do anything? Do Nazis rallying in Orlando saying that we are everywhere do anything? We have a member that has been indicted on campaign finance violations. And he still sits in that seat every single meeting and helps prop up the swastikas and the Nazis that were in that room. My name is Matthew Graholski, a proud product of Polk County Public Schools and activist, a ally of our schools, our community, and our queer communities. I was raised out of a struggling family, poverty, and the support of our community. And I'm here to tell you that the house is burning and you are not the firefighters that we need in the room.
Thank you. Kido Grass. Is it grass or glass? And then on deck is Deborah Lawson. And can you just state your name for the record for me? Yes, please. Glass.
Today, I stand before you to advocate for the return of a powerful and meaningful tradition: the issue of pride proclamations for queer students. In recent times, Polk County has veered away from recognizing the importance of these proclamations, but I firmly believe that it's time to bring them back and tell diversity, inclusivity, and the rights of queer students. The significance of pride proclamation lies in their ability to create an environment of acceptance and understanding. These proclamations send a message to queer students. They are seen, valuable, and embraced for who they are. They provide a beacon of hope and support for those who may be struggling with their identity or feeling isolated. These proclamations promote tolerance and respect among all students. They teach empathy, diversity appreciation, and the importance of treating one another with kindness regardless of differences. In an increasingly diverse world, these are essential lessons that will suit students well throughout their lives. The return of pride proclamations for queer students is not just about recognizing a minority group. It's about creating an inclusive and equitable educational environment for all. Me and my friends and other young people who shouldn't even need to be here, we should be living our youth. Luckily, me and the other Polk County Young Debs can get together and speak up against injustice. As a queer recent graduate of Polk County, I call for the rec- resignation of Rick Nolte and the return of proclamations in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Lawson and on deck is Silas Prescott.
So, before I start, just let me say one thing. My heart kinda broke at some of these comments, and I, I hope you're addressing them.
Pam, this is part of your time.
Okay, number two. My grandkids better not be allowed to check that book out. Take it off, take it out, whatever you have to do. Okay, so, my name is Deborah Lawson, so I'm addressing a couple of, one, one major thing that wasn't on this agenda and should be on every agenda and at every work session. Overcrowding, 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 overcrowding. Cannot use that word enough. Every school in Polk County is anywhere from nineteen to forty percent overcrowded. Something should have already been done. And when you attend a planning commission meeting, the one thing they, the developers are allowed to say in why their projects are passed? School concurrency. We are assured by the Polk County School Board that all students are going to have a place to go to school when your project is built. That's how they get some of their projects passed. That's how they did a whole lot of projects right there on Scenic Highway and Detour Road and all that. That's how they got those projects passed. Oh, why? Because we were gonna build scenic school. Imagine that. But you know what? Scenic School opened up this year, mm-hmm, to Elbert Elementary School students. Imagine that. You knew that well in advance. They knew that in advance. Elbert Elementary was going to be remodel before that school ever opened up. But yet, they can stand up, the developers can stand up in front of a planning commission and say, the Polk County School Board has assured us that they should be okay as far as capacity of schools. That's all a joke. You talk about buying property to build these schools? Stop buying property on D roads. You wanna know how to prevent some of those wrecks? Two, on Detour and Hatchnahan Road. Two bus wrecks, people, the last three weeks of school last year. Two bus wrecks. I don't know about y'all, but one was too many. Hatchnahan Road is a D road. For you to ever consider building a school anywhere near Hatchnahan Road, you should be ashamed of yourself. Detour and Hatchnahan, two bus wrecks. You wanna stop some of the accidents? Stop building on D roads. Kokomo Road is a D road. We hear school, the, it's in works to build a school either near Detour Road or off of Kokomo Road. Detour Road and Hatchnahan? Hatchnahan's a D road. Kokomo Road's a D road. You wanna do something? And I hope, I hope that every work session, you address school overcrowding. I hope that on every agenda, somehow you address the overcrowding because it's up to you to do something about the overcrowding of schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Silas Prescott and on deck is Pam Luce.
Hello all. My name is Silas Prescott. I am here on behalf of the newly reformed Polk County Young Democrats. I'm honored to be here today and to be speaking. I am a student at Barto Senior High School, and I feel my words may have an impact on your future decisions. As it is my senior year of high school, I'm on my way out. But I would like to leave my home, my hive, better, in a better state than it was when I arrived. I have seen Barto High go through some changes and some that are not for the betterment of the school. In my sophomore year, I saw the school purposely get lit on fire for a joke. In my junior year, I saw the art academy get heavily downsized to one teacher. I saw the science classes dwindle to nothing but basics. I saw the huge fight the Fire and Rescue Academy had to bear just to keep their thriving academy that many students would go to build their careers out of. I have seen lots of teachers get laid off. However, the most drastic change I began to see was the destruction of school pride and respect. I go into school every morning dreading walking to class. I walk the halls and hear my peers saying racial and sexual slurs to each other. In class, I feel the teachers do not understand the students or how we work best. At lunch, I see students get in fights or create messes around campus. I think students, me included, have lost any sort of pride or respect in our school. I try to see the good. I try to make each passing day better. I try to help anyone who asks, but it's difficult when you have lost hope for your school, and more importantly, the future. I think the best starting point is to make all students feel valued, feel seen, feel important. I am only a part of Barto High School. The two thousand students that walk through those orange and blue doors each morning, same as me. We are Barto High School. Not every student is white. Not every student follows a gender binary or specific partner preference. Not every student is able-bodied or minded. To exclude these students and not recognize their existence is heartbreaking to me. I wish for every student in Polk County Schools to feel valued, to feel important, to feel seen. School pride is only a symptom of the larger issue. The students do not feel seen. I urge that the board would bring back the proclamations that were voted off this August. I am a student at Barto High School. I want to feel seen.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Pam Luce and on deck is Robert Goodman.
Hello again, and as you know, my name is Pam. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, and I've been involved in one area or another of education my entire life. Two of my three children have been involved in education their entire life. My third child attended the Air Force Academy and recently graduated from the same college that President Eisenhower and General Patton attended. He serves and loves his country, and I'm very proud of them. I care about my family and my community. Putting together the inter-local agreement took the entire community. The months the school board, city, and staff sat around the table together and discussed and disagreed until we agreed and then crafted the document that your name is on. It was our community coming together for the children. It was not about stopping growth. It was a way to manage growth so that the children would have a place to learn and build community. I was absolutely sickened when I found out what happened to school concurrency about the lies that were being told. And then to have my supervisor tell me that she was the one that told staff to tell those lies and wanted me to do it also. I took that information about what was happening to Mr. Hyde. And, and he told me how brave I was and that it took a lot of courage to do that. He said he would check into it and see about beginning an investigation and get back with me. Not another word from him. Then my supervisor began giving me a very hard time about everything. I felt that Mr. Hyde had spoke to her and I was being retaliated against. She demanded that I submit the five-year work plan that you had not even seen was not on the agenda to the Department of Education. I called DOE and they told me I better not submit it because it had not been on the agenda. I refused to do it, and then I was reprimanded. I've never had a reprimand in my entire life, and I feel I was being pushed out of a job that I wasn't ready to leave. I filed a whistleblower complaint with Wes. But I didn't have, I didn't wanna sue anybody. I just wanted to let you know the information you needed to do to do your job and to keep you out of trouble. But no one even seemed to care. I am so saddened. The planning department began leaving out information about reserved seats that is, are required to be given to developers. Mrs. Cunningham was so right at the last board meeting. The fact that the new K eight is not being used as promised is simply poor planning and it, and is not using the resources we develop to work together as a community. There should have been a new high school in that area over a year ago.
Thank you, Ms. Luce. Robert Goodman and on deck is Bishop Mincy.
Good evening, board members. I am here to talk about something I don't wanna talk about. It's the Polk's policy with explicit library books. Those that violate Florida Statute eight four seven oh one two. Content that contains sexual conduct, excitement, battery, bestiality, pedophilia, and sadomestic abuse, all which is harmful to minors. There's a book Lucky by Alex Sebold that is in four Polk County high schools. Not gonna read a lot from it, just one paragraph. On page six- Ms. Fields clearly defined what chaos was at a board meeting, and I thank you for that. It was chaotic. Last month, we were told that reading books at a board meeting is chaos. Tonight, the video feed, as soon as the first person read from a book, your live video feed was cut to the public. Hope you know that. live video feed was cut to the public. Hope you know that. So, that's cutting off the microphone to the public from here.
FCC regulation.
There's no FCC on YouTube.
That, yes, that is, we legally have to.
Okay. It has also said the board has, the board has a policy for book challenges and that it's working. Is it? That book's in schools. Who's it working for? Minor children who deserve to be innocent? The community who elected you? Or only the people in our society who want to sexualize children? I'm sure no parent or taxpayer in Polk County approves of this board spending taxpayers' taxpayer funds on books that contain rape, pedophilia, bestiality, and all of that stuff. It's all in violation of Florida law, but here we are. You can't show The Exorcist to the hangover in a high school classroom, and you shouldn't be able to. Some of these books are a lot more graphic than those. Yet, there are those who want to say, "We want those books banned," or that people want to have those books banned. Not showing The Exorcist in a classroom is just because it's not age-appropriate. It's the same thing. It's, it, calling them banned is a lie. Let's look to some other counties, and I hope you look at these, who are doing things to actually protect children. Polk County has removed zero challenged books. Zero. Clay County has removed a hundred and seventy-seven sexually inappropriate books. Martin County has removed ninety-eight of a hundred and ten sexual books that were challenged. Manatee, twenty-five of forty-three. Indian River, thirty-four. Osceola, twenty-one. And all twenty-one of those are in our school system. Flagler, eleven. Escambia, nine. Marion County, seven. Broward and Brevard, three each. These are just a few examples. Please do better. Please protect our children. There's a policy in place. It's not working. We have zero removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Bishop Mincy?
I'll get a few extra minutes, I think, tonight. Of y'all, I supposed to be on earlier, and I didn't say nothing.
I offered you earlier.
All right, just give me, give me a couple more minutes, amen. I, y'all, want to say tonight to all of you board members, I hope that you all are taking a little time to go into our schools. There is a whole lot that we need help with, our teachers and our principals. And I think if y'all got any power with anybody in Tallahassee, y'all need to contact them and tell them, whoever the fingerprinting people is, they need to change the company or do something because too many children are going to school and don't have the proper teachers. During the bishop canyon, you got people in there, but people that need to be approved cannot be approved because the process is not working. And that needs to be taken care of. Our children, as our superintendent said the other week, staying home. Well, if you got a teacher, can't teach, what, what else to do but stay home? You ain't learning nothing. That's, that's why people need to see the importance, parents need to see the importance of what's going on. We fighting about a whole lot of stuff that really may be necessary to some people. I'm not telling you not to fight for what you believe in. But this, this thing has created more problems than you will ever see in a book. All y'all, buy your children, go get them a phone, and they don't know what they look at on the phone, but y'all believe these phones. I want to say I appreciate you all for giving the vote of confidence to be a part of this Oversight Tax Committee. Amen. I try to go to schools all over the district. I've been specially interested in, amen, the ones that have been turning around. Amen. I pray for every one of them every day. For all of you people that sit on the board, I pray for you. I called you. I called you. I told y'all this. I called your name. Amen. So, the Lord know y'all's name. Of course, I told him what your name is. And I ask him to help you, to guide you, to strengthen you, and have the right vision because we need the right vision. Our children are lost and getting more lost because there's so many evil things that are happening in the world. So, tonight, I appreciate you all for that. And I have been to visit the newer ones that, I mean, we opened, been all the groundbreaking that you had. And I will continue to do that because I want to see our district become the greatest district that it can be in the state of Florida. But I would appreciate if you all would be so kind and really kind of encourage these people to do something about these kind of situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Mincy. Seeing no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.